Appeals meeting for October 27, 2020. Tonight, we have one tabled item and we have four scheduled items on the agenda. We have proof of legal publication in the Webster Arrow. And before we get started, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, it's been a while since we saw these folks here in front of the Webster Woods Car Wash. So what I'd like to do is reread the minutes. Thank you.
Webster Woods Car Wash, located at 801 Ridge Road. Applicant Webster Woods Plaza LLC is requesting an area variance to allow a 67-foot rear setback where 75 feet is required, associated with the construction of a four-bay car wash on a 2.37 acre parcel, having SPL number 079.17-1-85, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district, under Section 225-17B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Okay. Could you introduce yourself, please, for the record?
Of course. Chris Nadler from Mark IV Enterprises, here with our Director of Engineering, Brian Powers, and Mike Bogacewski from BME Associates, our project engineer. As you know, we've been here many, many times, this time for an area variance. We adjourned about a little over a month ago to provide some more information. Mr. Bogacewski has submitted that information to you, the multicolored map of the easements that are in place, as well as a cross-section showing the slope of the drainage pond, which prevents us moving the car wash building any further to the north, along with the technical standards showing that the minimum tunnel size of 16 feet is what we are showing on the site plan. As you know, you've already approved a use variance for this property. Many of the standards for the use variance are the same as the standards for an area variance, things like will it cause a change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? Will there be an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? You've already decided those issues when you issued a use variance. The issue of whether benefits sought can be achieved by some other method. The information we've submitted clearly shows that it can't. We can't move this building to the north. What we're seeking is an eight-foot variance. It's an 11-foot reduction from the 75 feet that is allowed. As I said, I think you've actually already decided the issues when you decided the use variance, when you granted the use variance. Like I said, we have our project engineer and our Director of Engineering here, ready to answer any questions about the information we've submitted.
I think, last time you were here, Mr. Howza wanted to see the easements to see why you couldn't move the whole structure forward, because the easements were a little bit ambiguous on the map.
Well, one wasn't even shown. But, you know, I thank you for bringing that information in. It clears that up, plus we received comments from the Highway Superintendent, also from the ERC meeting, which clarified everything. So, that's the information. I certainly want it on record prior to issuing any variances.
The information Don's referencing, I think the Highway Superintendent said something to the extent of, "Please don't move it to the north."
Anybody else have any thoughts?
It's pretty comprehensive at this point.
As we said before, the easement is internal, or not the easement, excuse me, the setback that we're discussing is internal to the plaza. And as they explained to us last week, the plaza is broken to separate tax account numbers and separate financing and so on and so forth. If it was one parcel, this wouldn't even be before the board, because the setback is to their own building.
Absolutely correct.
So, we ran into this also, I think Flirdees came in for, it wasn't Flirdees, was it? What's the, Ullians, came in for a setback variance because they're going to add on. And there again, that's kind of internal to that plaza also. So, this is not out of line with what we've seen before within that plaza. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, call us at 872-7011. Okay. Anybody have any other thoughts while we're waiting? Pursuant to Section 617.5 of the Environmental Court, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think anyone's going to call in, so we'll close the public portion of the I think this really doesn't change the function of the plaza whatsoever. We're concerned a lot with vehicle stacking and so on and so forth, but they actually have quite a bit more space for vehicle stacking than the car wash down the road, the Royal Car Wash. I went there, drove through there to see how much space they had and so on, and how many vehicles they could line up. And this particular plant actually has more room to line up vehicles than that car wash. Okay. So, that was one of the issues. But right now, we're just looking at the setback variance, and I think we've established pretty much that we can't move it forward, the Highway Department doesn't want it, it's only eight feet, and it's internal to the plaza. Does that sum it up?
Although the other option is removing it anyway, and from what I've, you know, watching the planning board hearings and whatnot, I mean, you're pretty much at the minimum to make it economical project.
I think that's absolutely true, Don. Thank you for pointing that out. This is about, this is as small as you can make a car wash. It's not the 120-foot tunnel, Brian. This is the, what size tunnel? This is a 90-foot tunnel, so we've got economic issues out of the gate.
You know, when you bring that up, that brings one option to mind. When, a lot of what you folks argued was the Royal Car Wash, got their use variance, the Royal Car Wash, this and that. Royal Car Wash only has one tunnel. It doesn't have the other bays. Would you consider eliminating one of the self-wash bays?
We can't do that. Like Don said, to make it economical, it's got to have those self-wash bays. Royal Car Wash has one tunnel, but it's a 120-foot long tunnel. That's what pulls people in. I think Brian can speak a little bit more on the technical aspects of car washes.
So, the speech I gave to the planning board last time we were in front of them, about a week ago, was that with our 90-foot tunnel, we don't, I shouldn't be saying this to our future customers that are out there, we're going to pay the price and the quality of wash a little bit. Because you need a certain amount of time for chemicals to be applied to the car, you need a certain amount of time for rinse times between applications of chemicals, and so on and so forth. And what we end up doing is stacking all this equipment closer together than Royal Car Wash, who's got their equipment a little bit further apart. That allows them to run cars through their car wash faster, and so they can accommodate more per hour than we can. Even though they have a longer tunnel, they can accommodate more per hour than we can with a shorter tunnel. Their business model throughout the county, and even in Victor now, is that single tunnel. We see a market for people with recreational vehicles who can't take those through the tunnel, and either have to self-wash, or there are those, myself included, that may have a car that we don't want the wash mechanism to touch. And that's what a laser wash does, is that moves around the vehicle without touching the vehicle. And so there are people that are particular to that, and we think there's a marketplace for all of those for this car wash. So we can accommodate the numbers in the tunnel, but we can accommodate other parts of the marketplace with our car wash. And that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Would you like to go through the standards? All right, I'll run through it. Area variance standards, this request is not out of character with the neighborhood. I would argue that being internal to the plaza, simply because it's a separate tax account number, I don't think it's out of character. It's just, they're getting closer to their own building, is what it amounts to. Again, if it was one tax account number for the whole plaza, this wouldn't even be an There was no detriment created to nearby properties. The configuration of the parking lot and so on didn't really change. The only difference is it's closer to the building to the south of it. The benefit is not achievable by any other method. Well, I just mentioned that you can eliminate a bay. The applicant states that it's not economically feasible to do that. So, that one's kind of, it's kind of up in the air as far as the board members, how they're going to perceive that. The request is not substantial. I would agree with that, because it's only an eight-foot variance. So it's 67 feet as opposed to 75. It's not going to be on top of another building. There's no adverse physical and environmental impacts associated with this variance. There are not. There are not. We did hear from the Highway Superintendent, definitely doesn't want the building moved northward into those easements, because it would affect the maintenance of those drainage easements. Difficulty is somewhat self-created. Way back when, we gave use variance on this, we asked if there were going to be any area variances, and they said no, but now we're before the board for an area variance. It's not an undesirable change. And again, I don't think the eight feet is a significant amount, as far as that setback goes, 75 to 67 feet. Anybody have anything?
No, that covers it. It's internal to the plaza, no one will ever recognize that it's really there.
I think that's key, because it doesn't, the only neighborhood impacts is Mark IV. Mark IV, getting a variance from Mark IV is what it amounts to. What do you think?
Yeah, that's a good synopsis.
Okay. Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to allow 67, to grant a variance, to allow a 67-foot rear setback where 75 feet is required, associated with the construction of a four-bay car wash on a 2.37 acre parcel, have an SPL number 079.17-1-85, located in MC medium intensity commercial district, under Section 225-17B of the Code of the Town of Webster, by Webster Woods Plaza LLC.
Second. Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. DeNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Okay. You have your variance. Good luck with the project.
Thank you all very much. I would normally shake everyone's hand, but I'll forego that. Appreciate all your patience, and again, I apologize if I tell you we weren't going to need an area variance.
I neglected to have you call roll. My fault. So would you care to be ahead of us for the record? We really need a roll call for the record.
Okay. Mr. Barone?
Here.
Mr. DeNoto?
Here.
Mrs. Bolo?
Here.
Mr. DeMarco?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Howza?
Here.
Mr. Twozow?
Here.
Thank you. Next time I forget, just kind of kicks you or something.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay. If you read the first scheduled matter into the record, please.
453 Lake Road Garage Edition, located at 453 Lake Road. Applicant Dana Enterprises Incorporated is requesting area variances to allow a 46-foot front setback where 85 feet is required, and a nine-foot side setback where 15 feet is required, associated with the construction of a one-car garage addition to a single-family dwelling on a .46 acre parcel, having SPL number 048.19-2-31.1, located in an R1 single-family residential district, under Section 225-9B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Okay. Good evening. Just state your name and tell us about your project, please.
Yes, how you doing? I'm Bill Dana, owner of Dana Enterprises Incorporated, construction company. You want me to explain the project, or?
Tell us why you can't comply with the zoning as it is.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Just tell us why you can't comply with the zoning.
I guess, when I talked to the Building Department, the setback, the way, I thought everybody had a map, I made copies of everybody. It's like a pie-shaped, this is the owner, Mrs. Brown, Tricia Brown. The way the house is sitting on the property, it's kind of like a pie shape that's on Lake Road, where that curve, it's actually a double curve there, and the way her, you know, her house has been there for a long time, but the way the property line is, her back corner is close, you know, to the side setback. So when I talked to the Building Inspector, you know, we talked about what we could do and get away, you know, how to accomplish what we want to do, is just move the garage forward a few feet, which should give us, you know, the requirement of what you guys need to do, you know, for this one-car garage.
It is indeed unusual.
It is, yes.
Yep. And it's R1 zoning, I believe, there. So, they require, R1 requires bigger setbacks than R2 or 3, obviously. The garage that they're trying to add, it's not a large additional garage bay.
The garage we're adding?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, I mean, we're making it as big as we can, but to keep it in perspective of her house, it's, the garage that's there now, I mean, she's just got a normal SUV, not even like a truck or anything, and can't even fit in the garage. Like, if she pulled in, she wouldn't even be able to open her door. So, we made it 15-foot wide, which would give us a nine-foot door with, you know, with the walls and everything, you got about two and a half feet on each side, you know, that would give her enough room to be able to open the door and get in on each side. So that's, 15 feet is like the minimum, you know, obviously, everybody would want a garage bigger, you know, but this is, to keep it in perspective of the house, if you saw the way the house is, it's kind of like a salt box. If anybody knows a salt box, it's like slant, you know, steep in the front and then slopes back. So that's how the garage is now, and we're going to copy that on the new garage, so it blends right in, it looks like, you know, we want to make it look like it's always been there.
What I'm seeing here is, if they move it back to increase the front setback, they impact the side setback. If they move it forward to increase the side setback, they impact the front setback, because of the way the house is situated on the lot.
Yeah.
So I guess it's kind of a balancing act, as far as, you know, what they could do. The 15-foot by 22-foot, it's a nice-sized single bay, but it's not extravagant in size by any means.
The one thing, if you don't mind me interrupting, so the way her house, the garage sits back 10 feet from like the front of her house, so the new garage would sit forward 10 feet, so it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't get any closer to the road, it would actually line right up with the front of her house. So, you know, you just have like a little in-depth where the old garage is, it's still going to stay there, that's still going to be a garage. So, like I said, we just kind of made sure that the design of it, you know, with the salt box roof and everything, it just, like I said, it looks natural, so it won't jet out past that 10-foot of the, where the house is already located.
So the 10-foot you're going forward with the garage will still be in line with the front of the house?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the front of the garage and the front of the house now will be in the same plane.
Okay, because, yeah, the drawings are out of scale, so I couldn't tell that.
Yeah.
Okay. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, our number's 872-7011. Any thoughts?
There's no other place that the garage can go, that, it's a nice-sized lot, but the house is stacked up against the corner, so you have a lovely front and side yard, and really, there's nothing you could add to this house that would not need a variance in any direction. Adding the additional garage to the side where the garage already is, is really the only logical location, so there's, there is no way to do this addition without having some type of an impact on the setbacks.
Other thing I noticed, even though that house is quite close to the road, it says, it's, according to this map, it's 56.8, it didn't seem too close to the road to me. As I drive down Lake Road, it doesn't look out of place at all.
The right-of-way moves.
It's curved, it's a curved and another curve.
The asphalt isn't, is possibly centered in the middle of the right-of-way either, so that's what causes that.
That's a good point, Don. The right-of-way is probably offset.
Which we've seen along Lake Road and other properties as well.
I don't think anyone's going to call in on this, so I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Pursuant to 617.5 of the Environmental Court, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I don't really see anywhere else they could put this garage. They're kind of stuck in it. It's a real pretty, it's a pretty house, a pretty site. I don't think this is going to have any negative impacts. Somebody want to go through the standards?
Sure, I can. The request, I will say, is not out of character with the neighborhood, in that it's going to blend, the addition will blend with the house and look like it was part of the house originally. A lot of the lots along that section of Lake Road, I'm going to assume were established before the codes are what they are now, because I don't think any of those houses are 75 feet from the road. There will be no detriment created to nearby properties. It is significantly far enough from either of the neighbors that it's not going to impact them at all. There really is no other location to add a garage, so it's not achievable by any other method. You do want the garage addition attached to the current garage, so that only leaves it on the south side of the house. The request is as unsubstantial as it can be, in that you've minimized the size of the garage, so it's still usable, but is not egregious in any size at all. No physical environmental impacts to the site or to the neighborhood. In this case, I would say the difficulty is not self-created. The garages of the house of that era, cars of today don't fit well in them, other than to pull in and pull out and still sit in your car. I had one of those in my previous house. So there's, there really is, you know, no other method of doing that, and it was not self-created, the garage was there before you were, so. Any other comments or additions? All right. With that being said, I will make a motion to grant an area variance at 453 Lake Road for the addition of a garage that allows a 46-foot front setback where 85 feet is required, and a nine-foot side setback where 15 feet is required, associated with the construction of a one-car garage addition to the single-family dwelling on a .46 acre parcel, having SPL number 048.19-2-31.1, located in an R1 single-family residential district, under Section 225-9B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Second.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Howza?
Aye.
Mr. DeNoto?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye. You have your variance? Couple of conditions. One year for meaningful construction, you're probably going to jump right on it.
Yeah, I just got.
So you want a garage through the car for the winter?
Get the Building Department tomorrow and?
And you need a building permit, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get to them tomorrow or Thursday, and we'll get going.
Good luck with the project.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I-24 Marquardt Drive Edition, if you can read that one into the record, please.
All right. 524 Marquardt Drive Edition, located at 524 Marquardt Drive. Applicant Jim Brown is requesting an area variance to allow a 15-foot rear setback where 50 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 14-foot by 18-foot addition to a single-family dwelling on a .3 acre parcel, having SPL number 063.11-3-35, located in an R3 single-family residential district, under Section 225-11B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Could you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Jim Brown, the contractor.
Hi, and I'm Tammy Claflin, the homeowner.
Tell us about your project.
I'm sorry?
Just tell us about your project.
Yes, we're planning to add a 14-foot by 18-foot therapy pool addition on the back of the garage. So it goes out about 18 feet from the back of the garage, and it's the same width as the garage. It'll be a hip-frame structure on the roof, so it matches the existing house. And I assume you have the paperwork, where I took some photos in the back, kind of shows where we're going to be adding on the back of the garage with that. So the pool itself's about seven feet by 10 feet, and it's into the ground, and it's got up about two feet, about a four-foot deep therapy pool that's in the room. I don't know if you have any other questions on it.
So the door from the pool goes into the garage, but it won't be able to go into the house proper at all.
Right, just due to where we had to put the addition, it goes through the garage.
And that's heated space. The pool room has to be heated space, I would assume.
Yes, yep, so we have a heating system for that.
When I visited the site, that's a tiny lot.
Yeah, it is a tiny lot.
And yet, it has amazing privacy to the rear side, because it's so wooded. I don't know if you noticed the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the photograph shows us exactly. Let me ask you, wouldn't you rather have that come off part of the heated part of the house, or doesn't, so you walk right, because you've got to walk from the one room through the cold garage into the warm room?
Right, I mean, it's one of those things, just due to the layout of the house, you know, because directly, right next to the garage is a kitchen and a dinette, so if you add there, you lose your entire back view. And then, you go further down, you're in the bedroom area of the house, so there's not a good spot there as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sense of the location.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, that, you know, absolutely, if we can do that, that would be preferred, but it doesn't always work out.
This meeting is open to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this project, you can call us at 872-7011. You know, the lot is only 95 feet deep on that one side, and it's a corner lot.
Yeah, and Marquardt doesn't make a 90-degree angle with West Road, it's actually a cube, so that lot's compressed even further than it might normally be.
Yep, I agree. Interesting. Yeah, actually, that lot wouldn't even comply to today's R3 zoning.
No, it wouldn't.
I don't think anyone's going to call in, so I'll close the public portion of the Pursuant to 617.5 of the Environmental Court, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's go through the standards. Request is not out of character with the neighborhood. We've got sheds and other things that are closer to the lot lines, they haven't really created a problem, and this is not going to be a high-intensity section of the house, so it's not as though we're building a deck and pushing it up against the rear lot line, there's going to be a wall and everything else. So, by that same token, there won't be a detriment created to the nearby properties. The benefit's not achievable by any other method. We've already discussed the fact that because of the layout of the house, with the bedroom and the kitchen dining area on the back, that you really can't locate this anywhere else. Request is not- Request is not substantial. I would say that it is fairly substantial, but given the angles of the streets where Markwart meets West Road and the size of the lot in general, we're going... I'll sort of give that one a pass. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Difficulty is not self-created. When this lot was laid out, as was pointed out, the code was considerably different. The lot probably wouldn't even be approved in its... in this layout at this day and age, so there's really not self-created in this instance. It's not an undesirable change. I wouldn't mind having one of these myself, and so... Any less, anybody's got anything else to add?
It's pretty straightforward. Do you have any comments?
No.
I'll make a motion to grant an area variance at 524 Markwart Drive to allow a 15-foot rear setback where 50 foot is required, associated with the construction of a 14-by-18-foot addition to a single-family dwelling on a 3/10ths of an acre parcel, having SPL number 063.11-3-35 located in an R3 single-family residential district under Section 225-11B of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Second.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Houser?
Aye.
You have your variance? Couple of conditions. One year meaningful construction, the variance is good for the year, and you need to get a building permit, and then you need to enjoy your pool. All right? Have a good night. Very much. Have a good night. Good night. Next item up is 734 Close Circle. If you could read that into the record, please, Corin.
Yes. 734 Close Circle. Located at 734 Close Circle, applicant Adam Gerzak is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a 10-foot by 14-foot utility shed, in addition to having an existing pool cabana, which is currently a shed, on a .33-acre parcel having SPL number 064.18-1-79 in an R3 single-family residential district under Section 225-48 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you doing today?
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Adam Gerzak. Adam Gerzak, 734 Close Circle.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
I'd like to add a shed, 10-by-14 shed, but theoretically, I have a shed already, but it's a... It's really a cabana. I have some photos if I don't think it'd be... I'm not sure if you'll be able to see it from here, but it's clearly a cabana, kind of small, but I'm looking to put a shed behind it, in line with it. There's a line of pine trees that would block its view from one neighboring side. The back neighbors would see, but they only see the cabana anyway, so I don't think it's going to change much of the layout. That's my personal opinion. I guess I'm biased.
Okay. Now, the shed is going to be 15 feet off the lot lines?
Yes.
Correct? We've run into these situations before where we call one of the structures an accessory structure. I wonder if that would apply here? The cabana...
That's what I was wondering.
The cabana could be the accessory structure, because they're allowed one accessory structure plus one shed.
Yeah, at first, I was a little skeptical of this because it was sort of like two sheds, but obviously, it's a cabana. You're not going to be able to use this as a shed for mowers and things like that. It just wouldn't work anyway, so I would say that it's more of an accessory structure to the pool than a shed.
Yeah, because the code clearly says you can't do sheds, but you're allowed accessory structure.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Some people do a pole barn in a shed or something like that, but, you know, you have a pool cabana, which is being considered the shed.
Well, given the size of the lot, I can't imagine that you would be wanting to add another accessory structure later. There just wouldn't be... There's really no area, other than where you're putting that shed, to put an additional building, so I think one of them could certainly be an accessory structure and not negatively impact the homeowner.
I could see the need for storage. I mean, the garage is only 20... A 20-by-20 garage. By the time you put a car to... Maybe try and get two cars, where do you put your lawnmower, your other gardening tools and so on and so forth? You don't put in your pool cabana, so I think the shed is not unreasonable.
Agreed.
Now, this meeting's open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application, you can call us at 872-7011. And in the meantime, while we're waiting, pursuant to Section 617.5 of the environmental court, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody have any other thoughts? We ran into this on Ridge Road, old Ridge Road.
Right.
West Webster. We made two sheds. They've been there since she bought the house, and what we did is we made the sheds, the larger structure, the accessory structure, and the other, the shed, which...
Yeah, and the one of them was actually a kids' playhouse.
There were no negatives to it. I mean, if there were any negatives, you'd have to reconsider that, but there were none.
And there are none here either.
Yeah.
Very chump it is for public comment. Did you open for public comment?
Yeah.
Posted?
Yeah, so I'll close the public comment, and nobody's called in. Would you like to go through the standards?
Request is not out of character for the neighborhood. The existing shed, as is labeled on the drawing, is actually a cabana, and it is being used as such. So there is a need for some storage on that property, and it is a small lot, and I don't think... I don't see any other place that that lot could be constructed. It's not a detriment created to nearby properties. The benefit is... I don't think it's achievable by any other method. It's not substantial based on the size of the lot, because I think any place on that lot, if it's constructed, it wouldn't need a variance. There's no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or neighborhood. Variance requests are inherent, self-created because of a need, but once again, I don't see any alternative based on what I'm looking at and what I've seen. It is not an undesirable change, and the question's not significant.
Does it even need a variance if we call the cabana an accessory structure? A shed, a shed?
For a setback. Yeah.
I thought it didn't need a setback.
We don't need a setback variance. I guess maybe something as simple as a clarification for the record.
I think the rear setback in general, I don't think...
Well, it's 50 feet.
Yeah, I think it's 50 feet, so...
Not for a shed.
No, but if we call it a...
How fit a cabana is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Say it again, Doc.
If we're going to interpret the cabana as an accessory structure, you know, it would need to comply with a 50-foot rear setback.
So what are we issuing the variance request for, for the cabana or for the shed?
For a second shed on the property. I guess my preference would be to permit the two sheds.
Do we know what the rear setback requirement is in this particular area? Well, that's... It's R3, but it's a cluster development. Is it possible that setbacks were modified?
Those are usually sides.
And the rear setback for an accessory building is 50 feet? But the side setback is...
It will be whatever the zoning required.
For the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Very...
Well, to Don's point, though, if we've got to get into the rear setbacks, we're not advertised for that, so for expediency's sake, we should just approve two sheds.
I would prefer not to do that based on other applicants that have come before this board prior to this for two sheds.
Well, it's form over substance at this point, right? It's not going to change what's there.
Semantics is... If the definition of the other shed is an accessory structure, I think we could proceed. I don't want to proceed if we're calling both of them sheds, based on what we've... Not allowed in the past.
Can we condition it that no additional accessory structures can be constructed on the property without...
That was my thought. Why don't we allow the two sheds with the condition that no additional structure would be built on the property? This way, we allow that. The other one's been there forever with the setback.
Well, and I just... I hate to make the applicant come back.
Yeah, well, I agree. I agree.
We're trying to get the least impact on what the code is.
Yeah, I mean, if you're worried about setting a precedent, really, you'd have to look through the substance of the request, and I think if anybody did that, they'd see that what's in the record right here. It's not that you're making a blanket statement to allow two sheds.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I do.
I think Corin is on the right track, lets allow the two sheds.
Well, that's what we're advertised for.
Right.
With the condition that no additional structure would be built.
I think that's a good suggestion.
This shows... Okay. This shows that the board actually thought about it.
Wow.
Yes. Okay. I understand.
Yes, we do our homework.
We always wind up with...
It always seems to be one that I'm going to go through the standards on, too.
Part of the code.
It's all right, as Don likes to say, they don't have to all be unanimous.
I'm glad the discussion took place. Well, definition actually...
Yeah, you don't want to stray too much from the definition, and you certainly want to make it clear, somebody reviewing the record, especially if this gentleman's going to sell his house, and someone's going to need a letter of compliance.
Right.
At least the record will be definitely clear. We're doing him a favor.
And it will be a different board then, so none of us will remember.
Yeah, I think we can handle it by conditioning.
Right, and make reference to this map, and we should be fine.
Okay. So we're going to allow two sheds, condition that there shall be no other structure, accessory structures on the property. That makes sense.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll stand down. You can make your motion.
Thank you. I went from a comfort level to... Liked it better when it was accessory building.
They do motion and seeker.
Did we?
You did.
Yeah, of course.
We do have to do seeker.
That portion means best law.
Well, did we? Didn't write it down. I'm sorry.
I'll go through the standards.
How we just did that?
What? You all said that?
Yeah.
So all we're going to do is condition it that there'll be no additional accessory structures.
I haven't made the motion yet.
Yeah.
So the conditions.
So you want to...
I'm going to do that right now.
Go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to allow an area variance to applicant Adam Gerzak... Gerzak. Gerzak. To allow a construction of a 10-by-14 utility shed, in addition to having an existing pool cabana on a .33-acre parcel having SPL number 064.18-1-79 in an R3 single-family residential district under Section 225-48 of the Code of the Town of Webster, conditioned on that there will be no... There's going to be a second shed constructed, and you will not construct any additional sheds on the property.
Second. Mr. Denoto?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo?
Aye.
Mr. Houser?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
All right, you have your variance. You can build your shed. You need to get a building permit, one year for meaningful construction.
All right. So now, what's the process? How fast do I have to get this? Do I get it now? It's good for a year? How does that work? This is all new to me, so...
Yeah, one year to destruct your shed.
Okay, perfect. No issues. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right. The other shed is now a cabana.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 1041 Ridge Road Self-Storage Facility. If you could read that into the record, please, Corin.
Yes. 1041 Ridge Road Self-Storage Facility, located at 1041 Ridge Road, applicant Ridge Road Golf LLC is requesting a use variance to allow the construction of a self-storage facility in a 5.93-acre parcel having SPL number 079.150-1-8.006, located in an MC intensity... I'm sorry, MC medium-intensity commercial district under Section 225-17 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. If you could...
Sure. Good evening. My name's Matt Nukel. I am with Pastoral Associates. Also here with me tonight is Xena Lagonegro, and the developer's representative, Brian McKinnon. We're here tonight, obviously, to respectfully request a use variance to put a self-storage facility within an MC district. The parcel's size is approximately 5.9 acres. We're requesting to put approximately 50,000 square foot. That would be the footprint of the storage facility. The total square footage is about 66,000 square feet, which includes a potential three-story climate-controlled storage building in the center. And I'll point over here and point to that particular location. The subject parcel is located south of Ridge Road, next to Brewster's. It's behind Brewster's, and to the north would be approximately where BJ's Plaza is, behind the road tree. One of the things that we did as part of our application is we did appear before the planning board last Tuesday, which the planning board submitted a nice letter of recommendation for the project, which speaks to this being a nice amenity for the local residents, as well as a significant benefit for traffic, as self-storage facilities tend to generate very little traffic compared to what the uses that are allowed in an MC district. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Xena to kind of go into the different aspects of the use variance and some of the constraints on the property.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Xena Lagonegro. I'm the Director of Entitlements and Permitting at Pastoral Associates. Thank you very much for letting us present before you this evening regarding this project. As Matt mentioned, we're here requesting a use variance at 1041 Ridge Road for a self-storage facility, and a use variance is the most difficult of all the land-use decisions to prove. And we often want to speed ahead to see what are we going to get if the variance is granted, but before we get there, I just want to go over some other points that will feed into the four standards that are associated with a use variance. The parcel itself is actually a flag lot. It has 48 feet of frontage along Ridge Road, a 270-foot-deep narrow access area that leads to the larger development parcel. It sits behind two other development parcels along Ridge Road, Brewster's to the east and vacant land to the west. Neither one of these properties is owned by our applicant or our client, so further linear buildings along Ridge Road will actually obscure any development that occurs on this property. This property also has frontage on Ravenside Lane to the south, and there's residential developments to the south of that as well. There are several access, utility, and stormwater easements on the property, which creates a benefit for neighboring properties, the Town of Webster and the general public, for access management and drainage control, and then also access and parking easements. So when I was preparing this application, the first place I went to gather some guidance on what the Town of Webster might want to see was the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is... It's very clear that any development should minimize traffic conflicts and congestion, especially on Route 404. There's a whole section and an actual study in the comprehensive plan that talks about parking and traffic circulation congestion. The comprehensive plan recommends shared parking and access management, and that the development should evaluate... And that the development should evaluate, development should be evaluated in terms of environmental impact, such as noise, light, traffic, and pollution, how those are generated. So the focus should be on performance of the property rather than the land use itself. And the comprehensive plan also is very pointed about protecting and enhancing residential properties using visual buffers and other means. So the zoning code also, in 2016, there was a local law that was passed that it said the LC1 district, Neighborhood Commercial District, and the LC2 Low Intensity Commercial Districts, those are permitted uses within the MC Medium Intensity District except for mini-storage. It accepted out the mini-storage and the self-storage facilities. Both of the LC1 and the LC2 allow various retail sales and service uses as well as offices. With the LC1 having a limitation up to 5,000 square feet, and the LC2 having a limitation up to 20,000 square feet. The MC District doesn't have a square footage limitation. So what do we know about self-storage? Well, they are low-traffic generators, they're low-noise generators. Usually the lights are wall-mounted. They're not really tall, like parking lot lighting. And they do not need a lot of parking, therefore low pollution generators. They also do not require a lot of police and fire services, of course, streetlights and other types of services that have an impact on community services. So why do we need self-storage? Well, Americans have a lot of stuff. In the summer, we enjoy our bikes and our motorcycles, our classic cars and our kiddie pools. In the winter, snowmobiles, skis and snowboards, sleds and toboggans. And we're a waterfront community, so sometimes we also have boats and jet skis and canoes and kayaks. And we need places to store these things. But most recently, with COVID, there've also been some other impacts that have also increased the need for storage. The loss of income means that folks are consolidated homes and moving in with each other. Our kids are home from college and learning online, so what do we do with their stuff? Businesses have needed to close temporarily or permanently to rethink their business plans, and they need somewhere to store fixtures, inventory, and their important documents until the world improves. A speck in home improvements is also another reason. Our own example is that we, we've been working on our house, so we moved some things from our garage over to storage temporarily so that we could also do some renovations to our homes. So I know firsthand how convenient that is. But whatever the reason, there continues to be a demand for self-storage, and we do have a market study. I believe that Mr. Artuso provided that to you, and we'll be able to speak to that this evening if you'd like. This market has an undersupplied demand, this is the market study's analysis. The market has an unsupplied demand of 40,000 square feet of self-storage. So getting into the use variance standards, there are four. The first one is, the property cannot generate a reasonable rate of return for permitted uses. On page four and five of the letter of intent in your packets, there are a list of items with some financial information. So from 2010 to 2019, almost 10 years, the property taxes have been $337,700. Mortgage interest, $69,200, just to be, to round up. Mortgage principal, $280,000. Advertising, $400. Grounds maintenance, $4,500. For a total of approximately $691,760. Number two of the standards is that the hardship is unique to this property. This parcel is large in comparison but lacks desirable visibility than other properties in the neighborhood. So that makes this a unique characteristic. Most retailers would want a street frontage parcel, any retail sales and service operation. They want to get their customers out of the property as quickly as possible and, and out safely. This property is behind other properties, so it's not a desirable location for retail sales and service. No one really seems to be interested, even though we've tried unsuccessfully in marketing it. Purchasing the adjacent properties is not an option, as these parcels were purposely subdivided for other development opportunities. Self-storage fits perfectly at this location because of its low demand for parking, traffic, noise, and pollution, all of which are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the goals for the Ridge Road corridor. And the town also benefits from the tax revenue this will generate. Number three, the variance granted will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The facility will be designed to complement the character of the neighborhood. Quality materials tucked behind other developments along Ridge Road. And we will honor the easements that are on the property to aid our neighboring properties. The buffer areas will be provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. The project does not exceed the 20% maximum lot coverage requirement, and it's compliant with all the setback requirements. No area variances will be required for this project. And it provides a service to the community. Number four of the standards, the alleged hardship is not self-created. The hardship arises from the unique physical limitations on the property, many of which I've already mentioned to you. The property owner marketed the property for nearly 10 years for permitted and permissible uses without success. The parcel, with its many excess utility easements, are a benefit to neighboring property owners, the Town of Webster, and the general public, but at the expense of not being a desirable location for any of the permitted or specially permitted uses in the MC District. This project received sketch plan approval by the planning board on October 20th. And they show favor, and I think they use the word comfortable with this project, and have provided the zoning board with a copy of their, of their findings. And I thank you very much for listening, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So the site plan that you've got there is the one that the planning board's approved?
Yes, sir.
Well, they gave a concept of that.
Correct. The sketch plan approval, so there is room for change within the framework of the zone.
Right, so you're not going back for any area variance?
Correct.
This, the particular plan that's up currently shows where all of the easements are, and we can bring that around for everyone to take a look at it so that you can see for yourselves where they're located. But they're pretty scattered throughout the site. There's an access easement here that provides access to Brewster's and a parcel to Webster's. There are drainage easements that run through here, the stormwater management area here. There's access easement that runs through the property here. There are also other utilities that run through the property as well. So saying the building is a little bit complicated, and those are things that we're, we'll have to work through, but we think that we'll be able to manage those.
I, I'd like to, I have a letter here from Tony Cachani, Chairman of the Planning Board. And it says, zoning board members, after reviewing the project through sketch plan review at last week's planning board meeting, the board is comfortable with the proposed use at this location. The project is approximately 140 feet setback from Ridge Road, and use itself will not generate a significant amount of traffic when compared to other permitted uses in the MC District. It will also provide an amenity to nearby multifamily residences, Anthony or Tony Cachani. So we got that from the planning board. I tend to agree with that. It's, I like, I like the idea that you're not using up valuable Ridge Road frontage for storage. You know, there's still opportunity for, you know, retail or commercial up on Ridge Road, so.
The, the application addresses, I think CBRE, looks like they listed the property in 2014. When, when did the golf course close or the driving range? Was it prior to 2010?
Yeah.
I would probably have asked on, I was involved with the construction and development of Webster Green Apartments. I'm Brian McKinnon. The developer on this particular application is the same developer that developed the Webster Green Apartments. It's, it's got to be 10, 12, 13 years. It's been a very long time, very, very long time. So we subdivided the back to put in the apartments, I think it was 90 units, maybe 82 units? And that created this particular parcel as well as the 1.3 acres that you see on Ridge Road.
Was Pastoral involved in the property at all between 2014 and 2020? Or is this new to Pastoral? Their engagement?
We did the design for, before my time, we did the design for the apartments that Brian is, is talking about. So as of recent, no, we haven't been, but...
So Mr. Keenan, that wrote the letter for CBRE, when he talked about the struggles with the property, what, were there offers, were there uses that were proposed and denied, or?
There, there was virtually no interest. I guess, well, you know, we had, we literally hadn't, we never had an offer to even consider. What Mr. DeAurco was driving at is a use variance requires financial hardship. Whether that's a great use for the project or not, we have to, we have to establish that there's a financial hardship. We had literally not a single viable offer or option for that property in the last 10 years.
I think I would save it in the letter from CBRE.
No, I'm not, right, but my point, I guess, is it's kind of conclusory. It really doesn't lay out any particular, it just says, quote, "We struggle to garner interest." So my concern is that the record is complete enough to specifically describe what the, what struggled means and garnering interest actually means in real terms. So that's why I asked with respect to the three of you, how long you've been engaged with the property and whether you could speak to that at all.
I've been involved for the entire time, right back to Webster Green Apartments. And I mean, just from the financial investment on behalf of the partnership that owns it, there probably would have been interest in doing something had there been anything remotely of interest. And there just hasn't been. Most of what you've seen along the ridge has been frontage in mind. There's been a lot of gentrification, not that the properties in the past were not nice, but there's been a lot of acquisitions where people have committed and done car washes and, you know, McDonald's and, you know, others. We've never had the benefit of anything because we just didn't have that exposure and that frontage and access. And we clearly, you know, fell short in terms of having a desirable property because the evidence around us is pretty clear that there's been a lot of very nice development the town has seen. And we just haven't had the ability to capitalize on any of that.
So there's been, there've been no offers, no proposal for the property whatsoever since 2014?
Nothing.
How's it been listed?
I'm sorry?
I mean, how's it been listed? I mean, is, is the asking price above market value? Is it, is it below market value? Is it, is it, is it average market value? How many, if you're saying you got no offers in 10 years?
Not a single offer.
Where's it been advertised?
So we've done a couple of things. One is we've had local brokers, like CB Richard Ellis, CBRE. The partnership of the developer has also got in-house leasing people. For example, this sign out there now, it's not a broker sign, it's the developer's sign.
How long has that been there?
That's been up probably 18 months, that particular sign. I think it was Howard Hanna, might have been before that.
It is an interesting lot because it does sit back, it's a flag lot. It's, it's only got access on the driveway that goes by Brewster's. It's been a driving range. But you did make one comment I want to ask you about. The developer that owns the property right now also developed the apartments?
The landlord owns them.
He doesn't own the apartments any longer? Okay. Could you just say that earlier?
If I, I don't believe I said that they own the apartments. If I did, I missed it all. They developed the apartment.
They developed it and sold it.
It's been sold, correct. They do, the, the current owner of this property has zero interest in the apartments. Now, in terms of your question on price, we actually were just of the opinion that if there was someone interested, that would bring us an offer. We never had the opportunity to even quote price, to be honest with you.
I mean, I've lived in Webster going on 20 years. Honestly, I didn't even know the property was for sale. And I've been to Brewster's too many times. We'll leave it there. So I, I mean, I remember when it was the driving range, I remember before the apartments were, were built. I didn't know that property was even for sale. I mean, I didn't...
There's been signs on it for...
Recently. Because the only, the only road access is on Ridge Road. You don't have access. But I do see you have, the concept drawing has a driveway from the apartment projects to the, the storage facilities.
There was an easement there. So because when we developed the apartments and we own this subject parcel, we had an easement included in the approval of the back apartments. So that to the extent there was ever anything developed on this particular parcel, there could be access up Harmony Station and around and through. And that, I think that's probably of benefit, you know, now to the town and ourselves that that's there. It just alleviates traffic, obviously, off of Ridge Road. So that easement was put in place by the town at the request of the developer at the time that did the apartments. We no longer own those apartments, but we own this site.
I believe there was emergency access?
I assume that was also a reason, Don, yeah. Gave another secondary access for emergency vehicles. Yep.
The, the, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch at the beginning, your, your role or position in here is?
I, I work for the developer. The owner.
Okay. So with respect to the CB Richard Ellis letter, again, that's a, a lot of it was drafted, it looks like, or dated September 9th, from the broker to Krista. The first paragraph, I guess it's the second paragraph, the second line to the bottom said, "After this realization, we then opened up marketing to other non-retail uses that would still conform to zoning." What was, how is that differentiated in terms of what, what comes before us, as we went to retail?
Well, there's been a lot of medical office developed in, in your community. Ambulatory, dental, insurance. So that would, that's kind of like a plan B, you know, is there any interest in even that? And there's been none. And if you look at where all of those industries and businesses that I just mentioned ended up locating, most of them have done nice buildings with direct access to the ridge with visibility and sightage. And any of the, you know, retail, fast food, you know, point of purchase is driving right by and I'm going to pull in and get a coffee. We just don't have any of that benefit.
So do you think it necessary that, that Mr. Keenan could get a little more granular with respect to a submission as to specifically what the efforts consisted of and what the responses were?
If, if me be... Is that a request? I could certainly do that for you, sure.
I will leave it up to the board, but...
Absolutely.
Again, it's a little bit in summary fashion. I get it, exactly what you're saying. But I think the record should be complete and perhaps be more detailed. Because I think with respect to that first criteria, he probably holds the answers that you want to get on the record.
Are you happy to do that?
Absolutely.
And to, to Mr. Genoto's point earlier, the sign that's there now has been there at least 16, 18 months, and it's the developer's sign. So I don't know if you want to let her, I mean, we've kind of already done it. But we've self-promoted the property also in the last 18 months within our own staff and had no results. So I, I guess, on the advice of counsel, and I, I totally agree. We run this quite a bit with use variances. We need more specifics as, with respect to the marketing of the property so that becomes part of the record, so we could hang our hat. When we make a motion to grant a use variance, we want to back it up with some facts and figures. So that's what you're looking for.
Yes.
Nick, the applicant that was here just before the Webster car wash, who went through the same situation a few months ago. And they, they had, I think they recall, they had, they actually come before us and kind of explained specifically.
Yeah, they brought, they brought their broker in and she told us what she did to market it and so on and so forth. And in addition to the costs that they incurred.
That was something we requested after the first, after her first meeting too.
Now, wasn't this property before the zoning board? It's been, it's been many years. I can't remember, but there was the whole... can't remember, but it was the whole subdivision, the Brewster's, then there was going to be a medical building, and there were a lot of conditions put on the development at the time.
Memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. But I don't remember what it contained or the timeframe.
Basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. I believe it established a certain building size that would require an access road to the west to Schuhr Craft Road.
Okay.
Once they went beyond that size of structure, they would need to obviously construct that access road to the west. Is that what you would call?
Yeah, yeah. We called that down, we worked together on that back in the day, and I think that, you know, with this type of use, virtually no traffic whatsoever, we feel that this would just certainly be a.
I'll leave it up to the planning board. I certainly don't want to lose light of the fact that that still exists.
We recognize that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Now, who owns the properties under frontage? Is that the same company, or is it a different owner entirely?
No, they're both owned by different owners, not by our client.
So this parcel is the only one you have an interest in with the easement out to Ridge Road? The only thing I was concerned with is, that's a great parcel if it's one unit, you know, for.
Well, the master plan for this entire property owned by the original developer, if I'm using the term, was supposed to have a single access road to service all the parcels shown on your map.
Right, the Brewster's driveway was going to move to be attached to the center driveway. The parcel that listed it east and west.
Would that be a planning board option, if they wanted to make that access, that single access they're asking for, an easement to the other properties? Or ingress for the other.
There was a condition of the subdivision, I don't remember why it was before the zoning board, but I know it was before the zoning board, and it was one of the conditions, was that rather than having, you know, three or four or five driveways out onto Ridge Road, and we know what traffic is on Ridge Road, that they're trying to combine the access to those properties.
That's a perfect sense. Minimize, minimize the road cuts up Ridge Road, yeah. I would think the.
Well, it's hard enough to get in and out of Brewster's now, having another driveway.
Yeah. So I guess what we're looking for, and you heard the same thing I did, we need more facts and figures from the broker, you know, delineate what efforts were made to market the property, and also any, you know, any details that you could help us with. Because again, the use variance, it sounds to me like the planning board has no problem with the use, but we have to grant a use variance, and we need to make those facts and figures part of our record.
Understood.
In order to grant the use variance, all right. So with that, if you'd like us to table as to the next meet, two weeks is enough for you to get it together? We need that ahead of our meeting by about a week, too.
That's very reasonable.
You can do that? Okay. So you'd like to table?
Yes, sir.
It might be.
Can you issue it on the, the letter?
No. And it, you know, a letter is, it's fine, and I recognize that Mr. Keenan, who no longer has the property listed, probably might not be in all that of a hurry to come in and support your application. But in a perfect world, he would be a good candidate to be here to field questions and so that he could advise us in between the lines, so to speak. I think that'd be more effective than a letter, in case a letter comes up short. I'm not saying it will, but it's hard to know ahead of time what questions the board members might have. And if he was with the property for five or six years, he probably could answer most, if not all, of those questions.
Okay. Do you understand?
That's very reasonable.
So the applicants may request to table. Shall we say next meeting, or do you need more time than that?
Next week.
Which is November 10?
Yeah, we'd like to have the information at least five days, five workdays prior to the next meeting.
Oh, well, that's.
We're looking at November 10th, does that have enough time?
Yeah, November 10.
Okay. So the applicants may request to table November 10th, all favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think, I think that's a wrap.
Did you think 181, 185 Lake Road, is that?
There haven't been backs. They were denied, one of those was denied, and they haven't been backed with.
And they were on this agenda, but they tabled again, but why?
I haven't heard. Which?
The two on Lake Road, 181 and 185.
And there was an email sent out that they were tabled.